Welcome everyone to the Township Council Meeting, Monday, January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four. This meeting is now called to order. Will you all please rise? A salute to the flag, Councilman Havitz, please lead us. Madam Clerk, can you read the statement of public notice, please?
Take notice that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with NJSA ten colon four dash eight, and NJSA ten colon four dash ten as follows. Notice of the meeting was prominently posted on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building, located at two twenty-five Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey, on January fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. The copy of notice was sent to the North Jersey Herald and News and the Record on the same date. Additionally, a copy of the notice was filed in the Office of the Township Clerk on said date. A link and a telephone number to join the meeting virtually can be accessed on the township website at www.lfnj.com. Electronic provisions have been established for the public to participate during the public comment portion of the meeting.
Thank you. If there's no objections, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of December eighteenth, January s- I'm sorry, can I have a roll call?
Councilmember Patel?
Present.
Councilmember Murphy?
Present.
Councilmember Havitz?
Present.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Present.
Council President Scobha.
Present. If there's no objections, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of December eighteenth? The workshop meeting, January second, the reorganization, January second, and the special meeting, January eighth.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Havitz, seconded by Councilman Vanchery. There's a roll call, please call the roll.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Havitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobha.
Yes. Mayor, uh, the floor is yours for your proclamation.
Thank you, Council President. This evening, we are here to recognize an individual who went above and beyond for all of the victims of the recent floods that we sustained here in Little Falls. And Arturo from Casa Otoro opened his doors to anybody in Little Falls who was impacted by the flood and invited them to eat at his restaurant at no cost. The gesture and kindness shown by him and so many people here in Little Falls has not gone unrecognized, but Arturo has really gone above and beyond by making sure that anybody who needed a warm meal after dealing with back-to-back floods had the ability to come in, sit down, and eat, no questions asked. And in talking to him and hearing some stories, I understand that in that restaurant that evening, there were friendships made. There were friendships between residents who were meeting other residents, their neighbors, for the very first time, living just a block or two apart, a couple of homes apart, people who had never spoken to their neighbors. And that is something that is immeasurable. The absolute degree to which you went above and beyond cannot be commended enough. And I'm going to ask you to join me up here as I read a proclamation in your honor. And the proclamation reads, whereas Arturo Maracho and his family established Casa Otoro Bistro at seventy-five Main Street in Little Falls in two thousand and seventeen. And whereas Casa Otoro Bistro has distinguished itself as one of Little Falls' favorite restaurants, offering the finest Italian cuisine. And whereas the Maracho family through Casa Otoro Bistro have been active members of the Little Falls community through sponsorships of athletic teams and donations to community groups and causes. And whereas Casa Otoro Bistro remained open during the COVID-nineteen pandemic, offering take-home fare and outdoor dining to a community in dire need of normalcy and ways to gather safely. And whereas the recent expansion of Casa Otoro Bistro has enabled the Maracho family to serve more clients on a nightly basis. And whereas during the flooding in Little Falls of two thousand and twenty-four, Arturo Maracho and his family felt sincere empathy towards the victims of the flooding and sought a way to use their talents to bring comfort to those members of the Little Falls community. And whereas on January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, Casa Otoro Bistro and the Maracho family opened their doors to victims of the flood and provided a delicious meal to them free of charge. Now it is fitting and proper that I, James Belford Damiano, Mayor of the Township of Little Falls, along with the entire Township Council, do hereby express heartfelt thanks, appreciation, and recognition to Arturo Maracho, the entire Maracho family, and the staff of Casa Otoro Bistro on this twenty-second day of January, two thousand and twenty-four. Arturo, thank you.
Um, can we? Bring the podium.
You want to spin it, Brad?
Yes. We're gonna, uh, move, we're gonna, uh, move this agenda to the portion, we have a Mary Seales here from United Way. Um, and I invited her to speak to the governing body to talk about what the United Way could do for the Little Falls residents that were affected by the recent, uh, double flooding. So, Mary?
Good evening. My name is Mary Seles. I'm the CEO of United Way of Passaic County. Um, and in response to the flooding that occurred, um, in December, United Way launched, um, the Disaster Relief and Recovery Fund for Passaic County. That I sent out the press release the Friday before, uh, December, knowing that many families, um, had suffered significant loss heading into the holidays. Um, the announcement was to raise funds, uh, for flooding victims, and the funds would be used to coordinate, um, uh, recovery response. Uh, the United Way activates what's called the COAD, or the Community Organizations Active in Disaster, um, in response to disasters like flooding or COVID. Um, and the funds would be raised, um, in collaboration with, um, and, and we would decide on how they would be administered in collaboration with, um, our partners through the COAD such as Salvation Army, the Red Cross, Offices of Emergency Management. Um, the Red Cross and Offices of Emergency Management are really first responders in this type of disaster. And, um, so we worked with them, they've, the Red Cross has done disaster assessments. Offices of Emergency Management has all of the maps in terms of where the flooding was, uh, took place. Um, but the purpose of the fund is to help meet unmet needs of residents that have been impacted by flooding, knowing that, um, FEMA assistance, um, most likely is not going to be, be come to directly to individuals in this instance. Um, and so we knew that there was significant need in the community. Um, not just because of the flooding, but we're aware of the fact that, um, many communities have been hit hard by things like inflation and high interest rates. Um, in addition to people maybe having depleted, uh, things like emergency funds because due to the pandemic. Um, so, um, sent out a press release this morning that we're partnering with, um, Catholic charities, um, to provide case management, to disaster, um, disaster case managers, victims of a flooding, um, and there'll be cash assistance, um, that will be, um, given out, um, again, as we have funds available. Um, the one thing I'm always talking about is the fact that we don't have enough for everyone. Um, we're trying to raise the funds. We had a local business, um, in Patterson donate, um, to the fund. We've also had some individuals donate. I'm continuing to do outreach, but this really can only be successful through partnership. And so we're letting everyone know, um, and really that was the purpose of the announcement in December was we needed to raise the funds to be able to help people. Um, um, so, you know, in the press release, um, that I sent, um, to tap into to, uh, that are various outlets, it'll provide, um, the name of, um, the, the contact information for case management. Uh, individuals can reach out to this, to the case manager, um, have an intake, um, and then on a case-by-case basis, you know, direct assistance would be, um, administered. Um, also, case management is an important component of this because there may be referrals that can be made to provide, um, you know, additional assistance will exhaust all of the resources that exist. Um, and then the direct assistance is really to meet unmet needs because we know that there are significant needs in that community.
Thank you. Um, are there questions from the council?
Um, I have a question.
I have had residents, uh, reach out to me about monetary donations. Um, so making a monetary donation to the United Way, does it go into an overall pool? Or could it be specific to the township of Little, or the residents of Little Falls, I should say?
Yeah, that's a great question. Thanks for asking that. So on our website, we have a, um, a disaster, uh, recovery fund page, and I always encourage people to, if you want to, if you want to donate specifically to the, this, uh, disaster relief recovery fund, please go to that page and make that donation. It's, it's in a separate portal, um, from our general, you know, online donations. If you're writing a check, please make that notation in the memo. Um, and you know, and, and the account for, uh, the flood recovery is, is housed separately. It's, it's, it's in a different bank account. So, you know, we're very, um, we're the United Way, we're going to be very rigorous in our financial management practices. Um, to the, to the question about making a designated donation be specific to Little Falls, I think that would be a conversation I'd be willing to have with the donor. Um, if it was, you know, a sig- a sizable donation, um, it would be challenging for us to have a, a lot of, you know, small donations come in and try to keep track and designate them to a specific municipality. Um, we haven't had that request, um, as of yet, so that would be something that I would have to take under consideration and and confer with my Board of Directors on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, Councilman, uh, Councilman Vanchery.
Thank you, Ms. Seles. Appreciate that. Um, with your release today, if you could get it over to Council President Scobha or Mayor Damiano, we should consider putting something on the email blast and putting it on social, let residents know about this. So it'd be great if you can get that over to us.
Absolutely.
This way we can get it out because I'm sure once it hits social media and a lot of the residents that were impacted will want to look into the information. But again, thank you and your organization for doing this for our residents, so.
No, thank you, and thank you for helping me raise the funds. I mean, that's one of the reasons I'm here. You know, there's, uh, the stories that are coming in in terms of like what people have been going through, it's really heartbreaking. Um, and I know that we don't have enough funds in place to meet the need, so thank you for your support.
Do you know a, a range of what, uh, possibly the residents may receive when this program, uh, kicks off?
Yeah, so it's going to be based, again, it's going to be case-by-case basis, depending on the need, depending on household size. Um, and you know, everyone has different circumstances, but we're, we've ballparked it in the, you know, up to seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Um, Mr. Kucia, staff, do you have any questions regarding this program? Mayor?
No, other than to say that I really appreciate you coming here this evening, I thank you for everything that you're doing for the residents of this community who do desperately need this assistance during this time. And thank you, Council President, for, for setting this up, it is very much appreciated. This is certainly something that this community needs, much like Casa Otoro providing meals through Arturo. You are providing another level of assistance to these people, uh, who, who certainly need it, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, the state of the township?
Thank you, Council President. This evening I will be providing the state of the township on January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four. As we enter two thousand and twenty-four, I had hoped to start the state of the township differently. I was hoping I could begin by talking about all of the great things that happened in two thousand and twenty-three and all the things we have to look forward to in two thousand and twenty-four. Unfortunately, the topic I'm going to start with is neither of those. As everyone knows, this township has dealt with grave hardship over this past month. Two devastating back-to-back floods hitting this township just three weeks apart. But with that devastation, in spite of all the hatred and animosity in this country, I watched this community come together to support those affected in an incredible fashion, putting race, religion, and politics aside. Watching this occur right before my eyes, with mountains of toys being delivered to assist around the holidays, to neighbors donating food, to restaurants providing free meals, was inspirational. I stand here today as the proudest mayor in this country. I stand here today before a township that has reaffirmed my faith in humanity, and I want to thank everyone who has had any part in helping these residents, from our police, fire, EMS, and Office of Emergency Management. Our DPW who worked tirelessly to help get our neighborhood back on track in record time, our recreation department who collected toys, and our administration who worked to make all of this possible, and most of all, our residents who came together as one family. And now I ask that everyone bear with me over these next few minutes as I present the two thousand and twenty-four State of the Township. Two thousand and twenty-three was a busy year here in Little Falls, and I, along with this council, have no intentions of slowing down in two thousand and twenty-four. As I drive down Main Street, especially during the holidays, I was excited to see our new beautiful streetscape with new sidewalks and curbs, lights and wreaths, all funded by grants. Soon, the streetscape will extend down Main Street and our other main corridors from end to end as we invite our residents and neighbors into Little Falls. Now I'd like to take a look back at some of the accomplishments and highlights that were achieved in two thousand and twenty-three and talk a little about what we can expect in two thousand and twenty-four. I'm thrilled to announce that in two thousand and twenty-three, the township saw an overall tax decrease for the second time during my seven years as mayor. Over these past seven years, taxes have increased only two point eight eight percent in total, meaning an average of only point four percent each year. I'm confident that this is a sign of what's to come over the next several years as the tax benefits of the revitalization of Little Falls take effect. In two thousand and twenty-three, the township received hundreds of thousands of dollars in grant funding, which will offset the costs of all of these improvements, including a grant to improve Wilmore Park. In the upcoming months, an incredible new playground will be built where the now wooden structure and swings exist, and with a state-of-the-art jungle gym and swings with a rubberized flooring. And soon, a real bathroom will also replace the current quarter john at this park. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Havitz, along with our recreation directors, for making this a reality. In two thousand and twenty-four, we will continue to seek out grants to improve the playgrounds at the recreation center as well as Amity Field. And in the future, we're hoping to improve Lewis Street and Sikorsky Parks. This administration has placed a premium on improving our recreational facilities for our youth to strive while offsetting these costs with grants. This past year, the site of the former municipal building and police station has begun to see its new life as part of the Historical Society and future site of Ethan and the Bean after sitting vacant for over a decade, with all of this work taking place at no cost to the taxpayers. I'm excited to see the revitalization of this building as our streetscape extends past it this upcoming year. This is a major step towards modernizing that property as we strive to continue to bring the curb appeal back to Little Falls. As we modernize and revitalize our downtown, and the demand for downtown parking continues to grow, I'm pleased that the township is making progress on the expansion of the former PNC parking lot, where soon seventy-five-plus parking spaces will be available for public parking. This is all part of the township's plan to meet the expanding need of our downtown parking as our businesses in the area demand this space. With respect to the Peckman River, just this past week, the township's excavator has continued to clean out the Peckman of any shoals created by prior storms. It's our intention to continue to do so as the need arises. We've also had an engineer explore the removal of trees along the Peckman, Peckman's Bank that need removal, and thirty trees have been identified that need removal to ensure no damming occurs at any of our bridges. This is all being done in an effort to reduce the, the risk of future floods as we continue to work towards finding additional flood solutions. Just as important as it is to have these trees removed, it is equally important to plant more trees than the township removes, and we will continue to identify locations for the planting of trees with the assistance of our DPW Superintendent Ron Campbell, who has planted over one hundred trees during my tenure as mayor. This past year, to more quickly and efficiently address issues raised by residents, we launched the complaint portal, which can be accessed on the township's website. We've received dozens upon dozens of complaints and concerns, which are all monitored and forwarded to the appropriate department heads who can quickly address those concerns. Thank you to our construction official, James Di Maria, for launching this portal, and to Assistant Business Administrator, Vince Quattrone, for monitoring it on a daily basis, ensuring that all of our resident concerns are addressed expeditiously. In two thousand and twenty-three, the Little Falls Police Department, led by Chief Brian Prawl, received the triple away, triple-A award for being a safe town. The police department has als- also had a record number of traffic stops exceeding eight thousand six hundred stops, walked through our schools one thousand, one hundred and sixteen times, and dealt with nearly nine hundred motor vehicle accidents. In total, our thirty-member department dealt with forty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven various calls for service and made one hundred and eighty arrests, all while patrolling a hundred and thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six miles, enough miles to travel around the equator of the earth nearly six times, all while doing so in our little two-point-eight-square-mile town. I'd like to, I'd like to commend our police department and the dispatchers, not only for all of their work, but for the countless hours that so many spend away from their families while working on nights, weekends, and holidays. In two thousand and twenty-four, in addition to so many other great programs, the Little Falls Police Department now has a full-time school resource officer to assist with keeping our schools safe, a great addition to our department. This year, the police department is also looking to begin increasing security throughout town with license plate readers to ensure that no stolen vehicles are entering the municipality and allowing our officers to respond accordingly. In two thousand and twenty-three, the Fire Department, led by Chief Ken Sitchi, started the process to acquire a new engine to replace, to replace Company Four's almost thirty-year-old engine. Our EMS coordinator, Mike Vanderski, has also been leading the charge as Little Falls EMTs respond to calls within and outside of our municipality for lifesaving emergencies, providing under four-minute response times. Over these next two years, the needs of these departments will be evaluated to ensure that residents remain as safe as possible here in town. In two thousand and twenty-three, the township has continued its road resurfacing program, which was suspended under prior administrations as we strive to bring all of our roadways up to date. We will continue to make improvements to our roadways as the needs arise while ensuring our roadways remain safe. As we have experienced over the past couple of weeks, the Little Falls DPW continues to be second to none when it comes to cleaning roads after a snowstorm. I want to thank them for all of their hard work, including during the overnight hours to keep us all safe waking up the black roadways. Thank you to our Council President Anthony Scobha, who has greatly expanded the senior citizen services and dances offered by the township. In two thousand and twenty-three, he's advocated for more winter, summer, spring, and fall events for our seniors, which we have continued to expand each year. I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly thank all of the employees of this township who work so hard each and every day to keep the town up and running, especially our business administrator, Chuck Kucia, our assistant business administrator, Vince Quattrone, who are my right hand on a day-to-day basis here in Town Hall, and our township clerk and assistant clerk, Cynthia Kraus, and Melissa DePiro, who keep our clerk's office running smoothly. I'd also like to thank all of the volunteers in town who assist with our committees and our council members who chair each of them. You could, you continue to be an invaluable asset to this community. Finally, I want to thank all of you for making Little Falls a great place to live, where I have the honor to serve as your mayor. I truly enjoyed each day that I have been fortunate enough to serve as your mayor, and I look forward to what's in store for the township. As I've stated in the past, if you ever have any issues, no matter how big or small, no matter day or night, I invite you to contact me by phone, email, text, social media, or whatever way convenient for you. I hope I've made everyone proud of the two thousand and twenty-three that we all have had here in Little Falls, and I look forward to continuing to serve as your mayor. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, Mayor Damiano. Have a motion open to the, uh, public, uh, hearing for the Green Acres Program Grant Application for Improvement at Duva Field. Moved by Councilwoman Patel, seconded by Councilwoman Havitz. All those in favor? Thank you. Um, so, that's okay, he's. Um, Mayor, would you like to, to explain how this process works?
Sure, Council President. The public hearings for the Greenacre Improvement Programs for the Jake's Law Application at Duva Park as well as for the Green Acres Improvement for the application at Amity Park. Uh, the purpose of tonight's hearings uh, is not so much to dig into the nitty-gritty of the particulars of the improvements that will be made, but rather to discuss whether or not residents are in favor of making improvements to these particular areas. So the purpose of this evening's hearings are to either show support as to why improvements should be made, or if residents have objections, as to why objections should be raised, as to why not to make improvements to the playgrounds, uh, at these two locations. And to be clear, the Jake's Law Application for Duva Park, uh, is a very specific and particular application that focuses on ADA accessibility and allows that park to become even more inclusive. Uh, this grant is also targeted towards making improvements at our restrooms to make them even, they are already ADA compliant, but to make them even more ADA compliant into the future. So again, the purpose of this evening is for residents to either voice, uh, objections to the fact that these improvements would be made, or to show support if they so choose.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Havitz, looks like we're, we're going to be applying for nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Uh, yes, so, uh, with this grant for Jake's Law, it is to have a fully inclusive, uh, playground, and there is a requirement of only a twenty-five percent match. Uh, so for our portion of the match would be only two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars as we are applying for, uh, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, which is the maximum for this grant. Um, of course, we will see how the grant comes in, and after the grant comes in, we can apply for other funding, or we can change the scope of the project. At this point, um, we have put in for the ultimate inclusive park or playground, and we will see how the grants come back.
So, I'm sorry, uh, Council, do you have questions regarding this? Uh, Councilmember Murphy, can you hear us?
Yes.
Do you have any questions regarding this resol- Resolution C at this point?
I do not, Council President.
Okay, so, I do. So, uh, if we, if this grant gets approved at nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand, uh, the township, uh, monies that we'd have to put forth, is that two hundred and forty-two thousand?
Two hundred and forty-two thousand, but we can look for other funding, um, like our Passaic County Open Space, our town op- our township Open Space, um, or just, um, bond for the other two hundred and forty-two thousand.
Anticipation when this is going to get done?
Uh, somewhere around two, the end of two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five.
And Council President, just to be clear and answer that question a little bit further, the award that we are seeking is the maximum amount of the award. Of course, as all municipal projects are, this project will ultimately go out to bid, and with the hopes just like with Wilmore Park, the actual cost of this project will come in substantially lower than the amount that we might receive. We will still have a twenty-five percent match to whatever that is. Uh, however, we're seeking the maximum amount, so just because, uh, the current indicators are in the nine hundred thousand dollar range, of course, the playground and improvements to the actual uh, facilities may come in substantially lower when the actual bid is received.
Thank you, Mayor.
So anyone that'd like to come forth? Mr. Kucia, anyone in the chat room that'd like to speak on this? Seeing no one in our council chambers have a motion to close the public hearing? Moved by Councilman Vanchery, seconded by Councilwoman Havitz. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Have a motion open public hearing for the Green Acres Program Grant Application Improvements at Amity Park.
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Havitz, seconded by Councilwoman Vanchery. Councilwoman Havitz, would you like to talk about this?
Sure, uh, so, uh, this is similar to what is happening with the, uh, Jake's Law funding, um, only there's a, a little bit of a difference with the Just Green Acres, uh, grant. Um, the project cost is estimated at five hundred and eighty-two thousand. Again, uh, we do ask for the, the, um, most amount that we would, um, think about spending for that playground. Um, for this particular request, uh, we are putting in for a grant for a hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred, uh, because the, this particular grant, uh, requires a seventy-five percent match, uh, for the project. So again, we can apply for additional fundings, uh, after the Green Acres Grant, as well as always change the scope of the project, and as the mayor said, uh, we do not know what the bid will come in as, so it could, so it could be also less than that as well. Um, and this would be two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six, as far as timing.
Questions, comments regarding this council? Councilman Murphy? Councilman Murphy?
I do not, Council President.
So why are we going for both applications? Is there a type of strategy to go for both applications for in two thousand twenty-four?
So because we are going to need additional funding probably, so we'll start with the Jake's Law funding for the, and there are two different playgrounds for Duva, and then for Amity, we'll apply for one, hopefully then being able to apply for other grants as well, within the timing.
Mr. Cuccia, is anyone in the chat that'd like to speak on this? Seeing no one come before us in this council chambers that are not, that does not want to speak on this, have a motion to close a public hearing?
So moved.
Second, second, move by Councilwoman Havlet, second by Councilwoman Vincery. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Have a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of Leonardo Lopez for the Municipal Court Administrator. Moved by Councilwoman Vincery.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Havlet. This is a roll call.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Havlet?
Yes.
Councilmember Vincery?
Yes.
Council President Scobal?
Yes. Councilwoman Patel, the floor is yours for council reports.
Thank you, Council President. So I was able to meet with the Clifton Health Department about two weeks ago. We're really excited for the upcoming year. There are a lot of events that are available through the Clifton Health Department already, and I will name a few that are coming up, but a lot of them do currently take place in Clifton. So the goal for two thousand twenty-four is to get a lot more of these programs available here in Little Falls for the residents. So there's not an issue with anyone being unable to attend them because they are really great programs. For example, on Thursday, February eighth and the twenty-second, from two-thirty to four-thirty PM, they have a free dental clinic for school-age children. So anyone can go. You do have to make an appointment. But it's being held at Clifton City Hall because that's where their resident dentist is, but I think that's a great program for parents that need to get their children into a dentist quickly and cost effectively. They're doing free eye screenings on January thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, between nine-thirty AM and ten-thirty AM. Again, that's at the Clifton Health Department and nine hundred Clifton Ave in Clifton. They also have a mental health screening that is going to be taking place on February second. That's between one and three PM. This is not a program in which clinical diagnosis are made. However, they do offer screenings to see, you know, if there's any mental health issues that they could provide you the services and the information for, you know, like depression, anxiety, substance abuse. So that's again, going to, this is actually at their satellite office, which is on two oh seven Parker Avenue in Clifton. Then on January twenty-fourth, between four and six PM, they have a bone density screening that again is at the satellite office. And finally, this is a little different from all the other programs, but they are going to have Northeast New Jersey Legal Services at their satellite office on January twenty-fourth, between two and four. And Northeast New Jersey Legal Services is just a nonprofit program that tries to help residents of Little Falls and Clifton through this program with any questions that they may have that are legally related. And if they can offer their services and represent any of the residents, they're able to do. So we have a lot of things coming up. They're going to be placed on the township calendar, so everyone can look there. And that's all I have, Council President.
Thank you. It's a wide assortment of medical activities that you told us about tonight and that are available. Besides the calendar, are there email blasts? Because often residents, as you know, Councilwoman Patel, will say, I didn't know about the program, or I was unaware of the program, or how come I didn't know I get that information?
So I have previously sent out certain, some of these by way of email blasts. I could make it more consistent. We just were talking to the library and hoping to get just one little section in the library where we can constantly have these flyers up there. So residents, when they go in, they could just, you know, browse through the table section. And then I'm open to any other ideas and ways to reach the residents. But it gets difficult because they do have a lot of programs.
Thank you. Thank you for that good report. Councilwoman Havlet, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. So first, I would like to again thank and congratulate Amatoro and Casa Atoro for what they did this past Thursday with the meals for the residents who were affected by the flood. Your generosity is just amazing, and we really thank you. Also, I would like to thank Bob Dombrowski and the St. Agnes Food Pantry. This past Friday, they opened their doors for residents affected by the flood for food pantry donation. When I heard that Bob was doing this, I knew that we had to help stock the pantry and help him. So with the farmer's market, I put out a request for our farmer's market customers and for our residents, if they wanted to drop off any food pantry donations, to do so and drop them off at the Recreation Center all week last week. And again, the outpour of support was amazing. I filled my entire trunk and had to put down the the seats in my backseat in order to fill my trunk, to get everything over to Bob and the staff at St. Agnes. And they were very, very thankful. They had so many supplies, so much for the residents. So really, thank you to St. Agnes, to Bob, all of his staff, and to all of the residents and people who came together to give donations. It was really appreciated. I want to just go over some library events as well, some upcoming library events. This week, they will have a strength and balancing workshop this Wednesday, the twenty-fourth at one PM. This program is especially great for seniors, and there's no registration required. So if you're interested, go on down to the library at one PM. Also, there is a pallet party on the twenty-fourth at six-thirty PM for ages ten and up. You must have a library card. You must be a library card holder, and you must register on the website to create your own masterpiece. They do have lots more events coming up. They have a great trivia night that is online every Friday. So for more events, check out the Little Falls Library website or the Facebook page. And lastly, I did have my first open space meeting of the year on January tenth. Myself and the members of the committee spoke about the five-year plan for our parks and recreation, which the mayor had also addressed in his state of the township. We talked about the approval of the bid that came in even a little bit lower than we expected. At our next meeting, we put a cadence on our meetings, which will be bimonthly. Our next meeting will be on March thirteenth. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Vincery?
Thanks, Council President. Couple things first before I dive into a few things. I know he hates the attention as he's sitting in the dais over here to Louis from Casa Atoro. Thank you once again. If you know Casa Atoros, you know their owner and his family care about this town. They love it. Just recently bought a house in town as well, does a lot for the community, and to hear all the stories from people that went last Thursday was great, not only hearing it from Louis, but also the actual residents. And just seeing that, just know that he's one of our businesses and just continue to support it because, like so many of our businesses in town, they do a lot for the community. You may not see it all the time, but believe me, they are doing it. So Louis, thank you so much for everything that you do. As Councilwoman Havlet alluded to too, with the St. Agnes Food Pantry, I have to say, you know, myself, Council President Scobal, and Councilman Murphy stopped by Friday night as well when they were hosting the pickup from five to seven PM at St. Agnes Church, and it was, it was a great turnout. I mean, a lot of residents came out to grab some items and just seeing the sense of pride, you know, seeing how residents in town and others rallied to volunteer and donate items. So it's really nice to see because that's one thing about this town is we always come together no matter what. Because look what happened recently, you know, we had our second flood in about three weeks, and Mayor, again, amazing job, just, you know, leading the charge, making sure everyone was up to date on the terms of what was going on to Chief Prawl as well. The police department was out there manning the streets, keeping the residents abreast of what's going on, making sure they were safe. To our Fire Department as well, the OEM led by Danny Jan Duso. The search team was out there dropping letters off prior to, to let everybody know what to expect. Our DBW Department was out there doing the cleanups, helping with the residents, you know, making sure that things went back to normal once the water went down. So just grateful for all the efforts there because, you know, it's very rare at this time of the year when you see two storms like this in a three-week span. But yet we continue to persevere and hopefully get things done because like the mayor alluded to as well. I mean, there's a lot to address, but you know, when it comes to the Seike River and also the Peckham River, but you know, discussions continue with other municipalities as well. I think, you know, you're going to see a united front where we hopefully find some solutions. Some of them may be short-term, some in the long term, but we've got to get things done because I think everybody is tired of going through this on a consistent basis because unfortunately, the hundred-year storms are past. It's more frequent than usual. I also want to commend the DBW for the work they did with the latest snowstorm. Our roads look great. I wish our director would do a tutorial for some others that could learn how to like take care of their roads because when you go to Little Falls, our streets are great. Can't say that about everything else, but you know, just grateful of everything the DBW Department does. And just lastly, to Mrs. Sellis, you know, doing what she's doing for the United Way, it's nice to see again where, you know, there's an opportunity to help our residents, knowing that they can get up to seven hundred and fifty dollars potentially through this program. You know, I urge all of you that were impacted to look at the information, whether it's on the United Way's website, or, you know, look at it when we put it out on our website in Township Blast because anything helps at this point. Having gone through it, I know what it's like. So, you know, just make sure you look into these resources. That's what I mean, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vincery. Councilman Murphy?
Yes, Council President. Thank you. I just want to apologize for being on Zoom tonight, a little bit under the weather today. So we made the decision just to play it safe and join virtually. So just apologize for not being there in person. I just have two items to report on tonight. The town calendar is being printed as we speak. I actually spoke with the printer earlier today, and they should be done in the next day or so with printing, and the calendars will be sent out as soon as they're finished. So we're hoping that they're dropped in the mail either later this week or early next week to be delivered. Probably mid to late next week or at the latest, the following week, but we're hoping for a delivery sometime next week. I know some residents have been asking about the recycling schedule. You could find that on our town website, and I believe we'll even be sending out an email blast if it hasn't even gone out already today with the recycling schedule for January and February. Another note, I just want to publicly thank and express a big thank you to our Fire Department today marked another incident of a work and fire. I believe this was even our third or fourth fire this year, where the department demonstrated just a fast responsiveness, and in each instance, they acted swiftly and, and they protected the homes and businesses and successfully mitigated, you know, any spread of fire. So I just want to give a big special thank you to our Fire Department members and Chief Ken Sitchi for their dedicated efforts and always being fast to respond. Lastly, I'd just also like to thank Casa Atoro and Bob Dombrowski. It really is heartening to witness their compassion and their care and solidarity with, that's within our community. Their contributions really did play a crucial role to provide food for those in need, and I just really want to thank them and note that it really is just great to see how our community comes together. That's all I have, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Murphy. Mayor, after your assessment of, of the floods, when we had the floods of the Peckham, you came back to this governing body and requested a a specific type of vehicle to remove large dumpsters. I know this is pretty recent, but you, what do you feel you'd be coming back to discovering body the next couple of weeks regarding staffing, equipment, what you learned, what occurred to this township?
So following some of the floods as a result of the Peckham River and Jackson Park, it became apparent that, apparent that we needed a roll-off truck. A roll-off truck is one that moves dumpsters, the larger dumpsters that you see around the areas or when people are doing major home renovations. And we have ordered the roll-off truck that this council previously approved. Unfortunately, the, it has not yet been delivered, but this reaffirmed the fact that Little Falls having its own roll-off truck is something that would be money well spent. And I say that because there were periods of time where dumpsters were full in this, in the areas impacted over these last couple of weeks. And it would have been nice to be able to remove those dumpsters from those streets and from those areas until the contractor was able to, to pick them up, especially over the holidays or anticipation of a second major event. So it is certainly something that reaffirmed the fact that the purchase of the roll-off truck was the right move by this municipality in the past. I will tell you that our police department, with our Office of Emergency Management, with our Fire Department, with our DPW, with our administrators here in town and myself, including EMS, there were times when I was under the impression, or I shouldn't say under the impression, that I was concerned that I may have to make ultimate decisions during this major event. And I mean that, and I say that because there were a lot of topics and conversations that many people could have had many differing opinions on, all of those people in an authoritative role here in Little Falls. And I could not be more proud of every single individual that was involved in this entire process because at no point did I have to make an ultimate decision. In fact, all I ever had to do was essentially bless the decision of the group because everybody was lockstep on every single decision that needed to be made. This town and all of the administrative personnel agreed every step of the way what our next step should be. And it made my job as mayor easier, and I want to thank all of them for making it easy for me. There could have been infighting. There could have been number of opinions that, that, that were differing, but there wasn't. And it made my role as mayor throughout this entire two major events very easy. And rather than have to focus on dealing with internal issues, I was able to focus my energies on providing the residents with the information that they needed, with the important updates as information became available. And I cannot tell you how appreciative I am of the entire administrative staff that we have here in Little Falls and, and how they responded to this. There were a lot of heavy eyes over a lot of hours that we were in the Emergency Operations Center because all of us were running on very little sleep and a whole lot of coffee. But the way everybody came together was inspirational. I honestly hope we never have to do it again, but I am confident that if it ever came to a point where there was another emergency within this township, we are more than well-equipped to handle it, to respond accordingly, and we will do so. Hopefully, with the same abilities we had during these past storms. And I want to thank all of them for being able to assist all of our residents who have gone through so much.
Chief Pearl?
Excuse me? Yes, sir.
Anything you'd like?
I just want to reiterate some of the mayor's comments. Yeah, the cooperation that, that we had across all divisions and departments within the, within the township. I've been through a number of different floods. I believe this was my tenth, either as a volunteer firefighter, as a police officer, and even as a resident living on Lewis Street for two of them. And the amount of cooperation and communication and collaboration through each step we've never experienced in this community. And I'd like to thank Mayor Damian O'Really for spearheading that and make sure that that level of cooperation not only was voluntary, but, but, but everybody was, you know, willing and really having him there to spearhead it. It just ensured the success, overall success. There's probably some learning lessons that, that I'd like to sit down with everybody that, that comprised the Emergency Operations Center, and then we're going to do a formal after-action report. You know, a lot of things went right. There are, you know, minor adjustments that we can make on going forward. And what it really was going to be is an evaluation of, you know, what additional policies might be lacking, or what equipment can we bring to the table just to better prepare us for the future? So we look forward to that within the next week or two. We'll sit down with the Fire Chief, DPW, the Township Administration, Fire Chief, Office of Emergency Management, and myself, along with the mayor, and then we'll, we'll do a formal after-action report on it.
Thank you, Chief. Our Hometown Hero Program banners, we have, gonna be having six new banners go up. One is Sergeant Carmine J. Conti, U.S. Army National Guard. Staff Sergeant Michael Joseph Messina, U.S. Air Force. Specialist Stephen D. Medina, New York National, I'm sorry, New York Army National Guard. Sergeant Robert Lawley, U.S. Army Veteran, I'm sorry, Vietnam. Staff Sergeant John A. Messenberger, U.S. Army Air Force. And Jack C. Jones, USMC. I think Jack just graduated high school a couple of years ago. So those banners will be going up shortly, and it's six new banners. Also, on February fourteenth, it's time to have our dessert and dancing with our seniors, one to three o'clock at the Civic Center. We'll have a lot of good desserts from Shop Right, DJ Music. Uh, we'll have a lot of good desserts from Shop Right, DJ Music. Uh, we also will have the township bus available to pick up seniors that do not want to drive or cannot drive. Um, it's $5 a person for non-residents. All council members and mayor and staff are welcome to show up. And again, that's February the fourteenth at the Civic Center, one to three thirty. Those that are going to attend. Please give me a call at nine seven three two five six zero two four nine, or my email at ascoba at L F N J dot com. Something new this year that we're going to be doing is having uh, some gluten free desserts and some um. I'm sorry, I'm thinking of the milk that, oh, almond milk. We're gonna have gluten free, gluten free desserts and almond milk this year. And that was a big discussion. Believe me, if mayor thinks he has a hard time doing the blood, I don't know what type of, how many hours that discussion was. So, um, so that will be on the uh. On the menu that day. All right. We'll move forward. Uh, Councilor Wenzel, do you have anything?
Other than the fact I'm not having anything made with almond milk.
Okay. So Kevin motioned open the meeting to the public for agenda items only. Moved by Councilman Ventura, second by Councilman Patel, those in favor.
Hi.
All those opposed. Madam Clerk.
Anyone wishing to address the township council may do so through the council president. It is preferred if you give your name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. However appropriate, you may be granted additional time and sole discretion of the council president. Members of the public who have joined the meeting virtually and desire to provide comment shall raise their virtual hand in the Zoom application. Meeting moderator will queue the members of the public that wish to provide comment and the council president will recognize them in order. Members of the public who have joined the meeting by calling in must press star six to mute and unmute themselves and star nine to raise their hand. Members of the public who have joined the meeting via the Zoom application must click the reactions icon and then the raise hand icon. Once the process is complete, we will return to the regular order of business.
Thank you. The floor is now open. Mr. Kushya?
No one in the chat, sir.
Okay. No one, anyone like to come before us here in the council chambers? See no one. Kevin motion to close the public comment?
So move.
Moved by Councilman Havlet, second by Councilman Ventura, all those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Kevin motion uh, to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Councilman Ventura, second by Councilman Havlet's. This is a roll call to uh, approve the consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Patel.
Okay, yeah, call the roll.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Havlet?
Yes.
Councilmember Ventura?
Yes.
Council President Scoban.
Yes. Uh, Madam Clerk, read ordinance fourteen seventy-five.
Ordinance number fourteen seventy-five and ordinance entitled ordinance of the township council of the township of Little Falls in the county of Passaic, state of New Jersey. Amending the township code chapter one thirty-six noise with a second reading and public hearing scheduled for February twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
Um, this is brought before us, is, are we we looking to do this on a short term basis, Mayor?
So, Council President, this is a uh, our noise ordinance here in Little Falls. And because of the number of victims who uh. Had damage to their homes as a result of the floods, uh, one thing we're looking to avoid is any sort of. Issues with noise complaints while they're trying to make repairs to their homes. So in extending them a courtesy, what I'm proposing is that. This council provide uh, you know, them some relief, allowing them to begin working earlier, especially uh, on weekends when they will be home around their their uh, houses, be able to make repairs. Uh, so that, again, there's no issues with them doing so. I, we're looking to accommodate them in every way possible. At this point, they have been through. Uh, more than enough, two floods in three weeks is is unimaginable and accommodating them with just a little bit of extra time to perform work. Without running the risk of of violating our ordinance was something that I thought should be extended to them.
Kevin motion to introduce ordinance fourteen seventy-five. Moved by Councilman Patel, second by Councilman Havlet's. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Havlet?
Yes.
Councilmember Ventura?
Yes.
Council President Scoban.
Yes, Madam Clerk, ordinance fourteen seventy-six.
Ordinance number fourteen seventy-six and ordinance entitled an ordinance of the township council of the township of Little Falls in the county of Passaic, state of New Jersey. Authorizing the private sale of municipal municipal property located at Jackson Street and otherwise known as block two twenty-five, block thirteen, in accordance with NJSA forty-eight. Pulling twelve dash thirteen B with a second reading and public hearing scheduled for February twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. So this is brought before us. This is a small piece of land, I think roughly about nine feet by twenty-five feet. Um. To Mayor, can you give us a back out on this or?
Absolutely, Council President. There is a uh, resident in town who has a lot next to theirs that we've come to. A determine is actually municipal property. As you indicated, is a very, very small piece of land. But because it's municipal property, they have been using it as their own for a number of years now. It's essentially a little tiny piece of wooded area next to their house. Uh. We have approached them and asked if they would like to purchase this lot as a result of having to open it for sale to any contiguous neighbors first. They responded with an intent and interest in purchasing the lot. The lot does not allow them. To double the size of their lot where it's now subdivisible, where they can build extra property. The only thing that this does is provide them. With a couple of extra square feet of a lot, uh, again, that they have been using, that is now municipal property. It would become taxable. Uh, by them once they acquire the lot. The purchase price for this lot is eight thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, the assessed value of that property. Again, it is a low assessment because the lot is not. Able to have major improvements made upon it that would otherwise make it very valuable.
Kevin motion to introduce fourteen seventy-six. Moved by Councilman Ventura, second by Councilman Patel. This is a roll call. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Patel?
Yes.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Havlet?
Yes.
Councilmember Ventura?
Yes.
Council President Scoban.
Yes, Kevin motion to uh, open the meeting for general matters.
So move.
Moved by Councilman Havlet's.
Second.
Second by Councilman Ventura, all those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed. Madam Clerk.
Anyone wishing to address the township council may do so through the council president. It is preferred if you give your name and address for the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. However, if appropriate, may be granted additional time in the sole discretion of the council president. Members of the public who have joined the meeting virtually and desire to provide comment shall raise their virtual hand in the Zoom application. The meeting moderator will queue the members of the public that wish to provide comment and the council president will recognize them in order. Members of the public who have joined the meeting by calling in must press star six to mute and unmute themselves and star nine to raise their hand. Members of the public who have joined the meeting via the Zoom application must click the reactions icon and then the raise hand icon. Once the process is complete, we will, we will return to the regular order of business.
Thank you. The floor is now open. I'm sorry, let's give us a moment. We're just gonna turn this, just give us one moment, Jim. Okay, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Melissa. For the record, state your name, sir.
Uh, Jim Doran, and I live on.
Good evening.
Circle. And first, I'd like to thank everyone responsible for allowing me to return to my home. The afternoon of the morning I had to leave. It was very uh, the uh. Water was not yet clear on uh, Parkway, but it was judged low enough. And it's not often that people who are responsible for decisions like that. Wouldn't go for, well, we can't be too careful. We did, it was done perfectly. I'd like to thank everyone involved for that uh, personally. I'd also like to uh, thank uh, Arturo Maracho for. A chance for me to meet my neighbors. When you're walking the dog, you can't much uh, take time to uh, talk. I have two comments about the flooding. Uh, in uh, what was it, twenty twelve uh, Hurricane Irene? The governor then uh, allowed water out of, I believe it was the uh, uh, far upstate reservoir, uh, Wanacue. And I saw the, my, my house backs on the river, my, my house, my property. And I saw the water rise for two days, declined and was gone. Electricity went off for a full week. It was fun being on the uh, deck with a uh, a gas grill. But the uh, with the electricity off, the sumps would not have worked. And unless that water had been downstream, there would have been flooding in houses that didn't have to have it in in that particular, I'm not, that was Superstorm Sandy, rather, sorry. That the uh, so the first thing I'd like to. Ask to be kept in mind. As forecasting abilities are tested and improved. Can uh, we ask the state government to have plans to release waters from. The larger reservoirs in anticipation of very heavy rains, uh, or however the uh. Precipitation is going to uh, come. Uh, it was successful then and with um. Gradual improvement in in supercomputers, we should be able at. People generally should be able at some point to know. How much water can safely be released from the reservoirs without endangering uh, the uh, water that's needed in the summer. However, it would work. We, 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 it, it's an enormous task, but. Uh, as abilities approve, improve for that, that I think should be considered releasing water. Ahead of very serious flooding. And maybe there are a lot of modifications on that. Maybe there are places that, uh, well, that's enough on that.
So we can, let's just talk about that for a moment because you raised this issue and it is an issue that comes up time and time and time and time again. The mayor, I think, gets bombarded by this issue. I think he was on the uh, news talking about this, you're leading up to the fact of opening up the dam and letting waters out prior. And when to do that and when not to do that.
Right.
And there's a big argument of discussion uh, going on. So Mayor, you've been involved with this. Enlighten us.
Sure. So ahead of this, or these re, this most recent storm. Um, there was a push to have the Pompton Dam opened uh, ahead of the the storm's arrival. Um, and I think that after getting more information. There may not be as much relief as a result of that as people believe there to be. And what I mean by that is. Is that for about fifteen years now, the Pompton Dam and reservoir has been controlled solely. By the gauges in the river. And when the upstream gauge, it's eleven point five feet, the dam begins to open and depending on the. Water levels, it determines the quantity of water to to release before it begins to close. Uh, in reviewing the amount of water that's actually retained in that reservoir versus the quantity of water that actually comes down. The Passaic River by the time it hits Little Falls. Uh, to, I'm not saying that there is. Any amount of water that might not cause additional damage, but it is essentially inconsequential. The amount of water that comes out of the the dam held back by the reservoir as if it's released early because it is a very shallow. Reservoir that holds very little water overall. And because of the volume of water in the Passaic River. Um, again, this is the other argument contrary to that of opening and releasing the waters early. Uh, this information was provided by an individual who is much more familiar with the reservoir's operations and the way that it operates. Again, I'm not taking a position that it would not have helped, but I'm not also comfortable based upon what I've learned, taking a position that it certainly would have helped. Uh, so there is certainly two trains of thought here as to whether or not that there is any substantial relief. I. I did request that it be opened ahead of time, not knowing, again, all of the scientific data behind when it is opened. Uh, but again, there is a lot of. Uh, I guess, science that goes into determining when the dam is opened. And it is no longer left to. As it was years ago, to human uh, error, I guess, in the sense that a individual human decides, yes, we should open it now. No, we should not. It is now computerized and once the gauges hit appropriate levels, the the reservoir is opened or closed. Uh, or the dams are opened or closed for the reservoir. So, again, we've gone, you know, almost or over twelve years. With a number of substantial rainstorms where the river did not cause flooding. So. Questions could be raised as to whether or not it is operating as close to correct as possible. Uh, and then the contrary argument can be made that. Maybe it would not have flooded these recent floods had that happened. Again, I I don't know enough about it to provide. More than both arguments that I have heard thus far.
Is the Pompton Dam uh, the one that uh, allows release of water from Wanacue Reservoir?
Chief, that's correct, right? The Wanacue Reservoir is associated into the Pompton, right? Yes, correct.
But that, so when, when the reference to the uh, Pompton Dam is to the dam. Uh, 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 on the Wanacue uh, reservoir. Uh, I'm, the reason I'm asking is because the uh, Wanacue Reservoir is quite large. And you say, and you're saying that it's shallow, it's just utterly shallow.
Gauges, I'm sorry, the dam that I'm referring to is the one in Pompton Lakes.
Ah, no, I'm, I'm.
Not the Wanacue reservoirs.
Okay, that's what I'm.
And I don't know if there is a dam associated with the Wanacue reservoir itself.
I think it's just a spillway. The Wanacue reservoir is just a spillway.
Yeah.
It's through the Paquonic and then Pompton River?
To the Paquonic, the Ramapo and the Wanacue all come together at in Pompton Lakes.
Right.
I think you're.
So the the spillway is not controllable.
Spillway on the Wanacue reservoir is not controllable.
Oh, that's the Monksville reservoir?
Yes.
Yeah, right, which is not controlled by a dam, by by a motorized.
Yeah, I believe it is, but it's the Monksville that takes in the Wanacue.
Right. So there, it sounds like there are some things that could be explored. If the uh, relative to Monksville or Wanacue reservoir. Because there were huge quantities of water there. And the fact that, as far as I could tell. Uh, the uh, Superstorm Sandy. Uh, a lot, a lot, uh, a lot of damage was spared by getting some of that water downstream. And you're selling, you're selling, you're saying that that was done uh, by the uh, automa- automated gauges before the storm?
That's around the time that they were figuring out the exact automation of them.
Yeah.
During that time. But what people need to understand is that Little Falls, especially at Beatty's Dam here. Is a choke point for the Passaic River. And when I say the Passaic River, it is the Passaic River when it comes here through Little Falls. But as you look further upstream. The Passaic River is comprised of the Passaic River from where it originates, the Whippany River, the Rockaway River, the Paquonic River, the Wanacue River, the Ramapo River and the Pompton River. And Little Falls itself, if we were the one area that got dumped on with rain. The Passaic River itself would not be an issue for us. The issue is the rain that is dumped to the north and to the west of us. Where all of these seven rivers start. Because when water is dumped there, it all makes its way to each of those rivers and then eventually to the Passaic River as we know it, right here in Little Falls, over this choke point that we have, Beatty's Dam. So Little Falls may see very little rain, yet see a flooding incident along the Passaic River. If these rivers were to get hammered further upstream by a major storm. So it's, it's a, there's a lot that goes into whether or not we see our water levels rising substantially right here in Little Falls or not. And exactly where storms end up being the most severe has major impact as to whether or not we see our water levels rising.
Thank you. Um, and uh, oh, the other uh, question I have is um, there's dredging below the Dundee Dam. Is there a compelling reason why we don't have enough um, scientific knowledge and technology? To do some dredging? I I heard from someone a couple of days ago, and I can't vouch for this, that. Uh, the river around uh, Fern Island Park was. Over your head, ten feet deep. Now you can walk from uh, my house to uh, Fern Island Park. The the silt has built up to the point where there's hardly a river. And I I know there's a concern about uh, volatilizing the um. Uh, sediment in the, in the river, uh, where it's, where it's dangerous, but it. Is it possible that technology will be able to address that before much longer?
Well, Mr. And that was the conversation when that came up, that those uh, those toxins. It was on, uh, it was, was, could not be done to dredge because of the toxins. And then the issue was where would they put those toxins once it was lifted? So that.
Ah, that's.
Right, right. So once you can pick them, you can take them out now. What do you do with it? You know, where do you put it? Where does it go? So uh, it became an, that that died pretty quickly. Uh, because keep in mind, this river was um. Uh because, keep in mind, this river was um unfortunately the most polluted polluted river in the United States at one time.
But what do they do? For example, what are they doing with the what dredge material that below the Dundee Dam?
I'm not sure.
Okay, so there there must be, I I think there'd be possibilities. All right. And just one more thing. I raised two sons in Little Falls. And in retrospect. Uh I've kidded people that I was thinking of writing a book about perfectly passive parenting. I took them to scouts. I did what I was asked to do. I I asked about homework and generally they had done it in 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 class uh before the end of the day. And I did help one of my sons with the the physical properties of water. But uh what they got from Little Falls has taken them uh further than I could ever have imagined. And I'm very grateful that so much is being done to bring Little Falls forward. As a community. Based on everyone saying, I want to contribute to a world that I want to live in.
Thank you for your comments this evening. So Mr. Kushia, no one in the chat, correct? Have a uh motion to close the public comment? Moved by Councilman Venturi. Second by Councilwoman Patel, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion carries. Can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Habits.
Second.
Second by Councilman Venturi, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, this meeting is now closed.